Good evening, everybody. It is October 14th. And I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners, who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening is our open session, call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption, public comments, and our administrative items include superintendent's update, approval of the 2021 Student Activities Clubs and Accounts, Student Activities Account Reconciliations, October 2019 to June 2020, MASC 2020 Resolutions, MASC Appointment of Voting Delegate, warrant approvals, and approval of minutes. There's a greater list here than what we actually have. We have the August 18th minutes from the tri board. We have August, we have September 4th, we have September 11th, and we have September 18th. We'll have acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, assistant superintendent update, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I will take a roll call and ask the rest of you if you are okay with the order of business this evening. I'll start with you, Mrs. Williams, Erin Williams.
Sorry, yep, here.
Yep, sorry. I should have gone to last. Paul Kendall?
Here and yes.
Mark Terry?
Here and yes.
Kathy Bates?
Here and yes.
Excellent. Okay. So I will first, I guess, ask if there's, I don't see anybody, but if there's anybody from the public who is here and wanting to offer the school committee public comment this evening. And then seeing none, I will move it to Jim. I can't hear you, Jim. You're muted.
Yep, I was trying to be on mute as people were eating and right around me in the kitchen here. So I apologize.
Remembering who I was hearing.
Yeah, it was me. Yeah, it's the voice. So good evening and thank you. Before I get into the superintendent update, I just want to take a real brief moment to say thank you to Barbara Duran. This is her final Ashland Public Schools School Committee meeting in an official capacity. I'm sure she'll join us as a member of the community in future meetings to provide comments. But, you know, I personally just wanted to say thank you to Barbara for the 11 years that I've worked with her. I can't say enough about the relationship that she and I have developed through the years and the trust and consistency with which she brought and brings every day to the role of finance and operations. And, and I can certainly tell she and I have had roller coasters where we've agreed on things and disagreed on things. But the one thing that was always apparent was that Barbara was there for the students, the staff, in advocating as hard as she could for what she believed to be the right thing to do. And that's all you can ask more of any member of your team. And while we welcome Chris to that team, I certainly will say that losing Barbara is, is a big, our big shoes for us to fill. And she's worked hard with Chris over the past few months to get him prepared to take the role over, starting Monday officially. I think Barbara's last day officially is Friday. And but from, from me and the rest of the admin team, Barbara, thank you so much for your, your mentorship, your, your leadership, the numerous roles that you've played within this district time and time again, stepping in as interim superintendent twice in some very tough times. And for someone who likes to be behind the scenes, you did it in dignity and I, I appreciate that and I thank you and you'll be greatly missed from all of us.
Thank you, Jim. Barbara, it won't surprise you that I have, we have a plate for you. I'm so deeply sorry that this has to be presented on Zoom. There's just so many things wrong with that. And especially given I've also been here for 10 years of your tenure and you've worked with multiple superintendents, which has taken a tremendous effort. And you've been the superintendent leading us in Ashland. And your reputation has always been stellar. You've helped us with the town and with relationships and the quality of your work has always been above and beyond. You've supported us all these years in many different ways. And you will be missed by not just this committee, I'm sure, but the entire building that you've been working in and the community. And I know, as Jim said, because you're behind the scenes, I sometimes people don't really fully appreciate everything that you do and just all the budget cycles and all of the, when you think about a decade, more than a decade for you, worths of ups and downs in the economy, different people and relationships that you've had to navigate. And I just want to let you know that I truly appreciate everything that you've done for Ashland. It's, it's been an honor to work with you. I thank you for everything that you've brought to us. And I wish you all the best with your, your growing family. And hopefully your, your additional time brings you the ability to spend some more time with them and do some more of the things that you love to do. So, and I'll turn it over to anybody else who might want to say anything.
I just wanted to thank you too, Barbara. Jim and, Jim and Lori have, have said it all, but just thank you for, you stepped in twice for our district and you steadied the ship and you, you were the steward. You, you helped us in a couple troubling times. And also I just wanted to comment, yeah, how comfortable I always felt when you were there to explain the budget, explain the numbers, that we had nothing to worry about because Barbara knew it inside and out. So thank you, Barbara. And we'll miss you, but I know you're gonna enjoy retirement. So thank you.
Barbara, I'd like to say a few words. And I think sometimes it feels like I've known you so long, I forget which, like where along the way we first knew each other. But I think it was when you were the town accountant in Medway and I was working with the town and as their attorney. And, you know, I feel like I've known you now for probably in 15 years or something like that. Last five and a half as I've been in the school committee and you served in your current role. And, you know, the one thing I thought about as I was thinking about this being your last meeting and who you are and what you brought to us and who you are in all capacities that I've known you is that you are just, you are committed to doing what's right. You've been an honest steward of every role that I've seen you in. You've been diligent to, to a fault in terms of identifying the information that we need and presenting it in a, in a clean factual way that allows everybody else to do what they need to do with that. Thank you for your friendship, for your service to the district. I wish you the best in whatever you choose to do with your post APS on. And it's just been a pleasure knowing you for as long as it has.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, Barbara, just another finance nerd to another. Like you were so talented, so talented. Like you knew things inside and out. And I think people have, don't have an appreciation for how our municipal and school finance can be compared to corporate finance and just how you know, you knew the budget inside and out. You knew the details. You, you know, you've stepped up in many ways. And just, you know, it was always great working with you on the little things that we were doing off to the side sometimes when it was you and I crunching numbers and whatnot. Yeah, we'll absolutely be missed.
Thank you.
Barbara, I don't have much, I'm not gonna have much to add that I concur with everybody said. You know, I really appreciate all your effort. The only word I can use is integrity and, and passion, right? So you know, you're, you're there, you, you always come prepared. You, you probably know it off the top of your head when we ask you off the cuff things. And so as someone who's probably the one asking most of those, most of those questions, I appreciate that. So good luck in whatever your, your next step is. And, and yeah, just appreciate all your hard work. And, and Chris, you got, you got some big shoes to fill. Like, you know, like I'm telling you something you don't know. But thank you again, Barbara.
Thanks, Paul. I guess I just want to say, a couple of years ago, when I started thinking about retirement and I spoke to Jim and we negotiated my final contract with the school committee, I said to you then how appreciative I was that I was going to be able to end my career in Ashland. And that's definitely holds true today as it, as it's coming to a reality. I have over 30 years in municipal, town and school government. And Ashland has been the highlight of all those years. I have to say thank you to my business office staff who made it a joy to come into work every day and working alongside Jim. Jim, you're, you're the finest superintendent I've ever worked with and Ashland is lucky to have you at the helm. And just know I'm not going far. I'll be around. Thank you all.
Thanks, Barbara. Thanks for everything. Doesn't seem like we should have a meeting after that, but Jim, you get to give us the good news next. COVID update.
You're muted again, Jim. I am, yeah, I know. My dog was barking. You know, it's, it's, it's a, for Barbara who is not one to engage in a lot of emotional and what was the word we always used?
Kumbaya.
Oh.
Kumbaya. During, during the summer retreats and admin meetings. Yeah, yeah.
Always, always do kumbaya.
Exactly. So thank you for, for indulging me and the rest of the school committee with that. So, so update with regard to COVID. As you know, on Monday evening, I, you know, I had to make a tough decision to, to move the high school and the middle school into remote learning for these four days, for Tuesday through Friday, while we conducted some significant contact tracing points across two buildings, as well as identifying a couple of students who did test positive and making sure that in so doing, that we had all of our layers accounted for through Audrey and Ed. It was a busy Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And I would say definitively that we would never just make a quick decision unless it was the right decision, like a snow day, if you will, for the safety and protection of all of our students and our staff. I am happy to report at least as of 20 minutes ago when Ed last called me, that the, the contacts and the contact tracing process and protocols are working beautifully. And the testing that has occurred of individuals have thus far, I think we have one to go, have all turned up negative, which is, is a really positive step for us in terms of reopening next week. So, so that'll be a further discussion obviously on Friday. But this was done in such a way that, that we could ensure we, you know, we could open next week by, by stopping and making sure we have touched all the points that are necessary. So I can't thank Ed and Audrey enough for the work that they've done. And, you know, the, the folks who are making calls for the town. We have a couple support nurses that do work with Ed when he's inundated. And this morning when he came into my office, he was like, Jim, I got something else. I gotta do, like, okay, no worries, Ed. We'll, we'll keep rolling with it. And if, if more cases come up, then more cases come up. But we'd rather ensure that we're doing the right thing. Again, I've reiterated and I know the school committee has, we just continue to ask for diligence and, and the community and our faculty, our staff, our students, our families to be vigilant in, in every one of their, their outings and their encounters with, with folks, wearing the mask, washing their hands, proper hygiene. This, this was not an event that occurred in our schools and there was no transmission within our schools. It occurred outside. And that's critically important to know that the protocols and, and procedures that we have in place are working and they're allowing us to stay open. And I just need to continue to reemphasize that and reinforce that with our community. I recognize that my messaging, and I even wrote it this past week, it probably falls on deaf ears because every week I'm making that, that plea. You know, Medfield and Medway, two of my closest superintendent friends are starting to see tremendous increases in their community as well in the past five days. And, you know, we're, we recognize that in order to stay open, we have to continue to plead with our community members to do the right thing. So I really don't have much more to say on COVID-19, except Friday we'll have more of an update when the numbers come out. Expect our numbers to move away from green, if you will. Just even within the community, we've had an uptick in the number of cases, as you've noticed across the state. That positivity rate has been increasing every single day. So we just need to be thoughtful of it and, and go from there. But our, our hope is that we can get back to some semblance of the new hybrid normal, if you will, come Monday.
Does anyone have any questions for Jim about that? Comments?
I just, as for putting my parent hat on for a second and being one of the people that was somewhat involved in having to do some testing with the, within the house. I just want to echo what Jim said about the work that Ed's doing in particular. That's not by any means to exclude others. But I know I spoke personally with Ed probably no less than four or five times on Sunday and Monday because he was providing guidance as to testing that has to be done and, and protocols and all that kind of stuff. And, and I know that he was probably, or he and others were in touch with probably another 15 to 20 families around the same time. It just the amount of work that he's behalf of the community is tremendous. I hope that we have a time we can be done with this and acknowledge the work that he and others are doing to try to keep us open, try to keep the community safe.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else?
No, just thanks, thanks, Ed and Audrey and everyone because that's a lot of work.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the 2020-2021 Student Activities Clubs and Accounts.
So I'm gonna let Barbara to have her final act of, of being the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Instructions and talk about why every year we do the, the Student Activities Clubs and Accounts for approval.
Tell us. Barbara.
Nothing like catching me off guard.
I wanted one more time.
So the law says that every year, a school committee has to approve the clubs that are going to run and the student activity accounts that are going to be held by the town. That's short and sweet.
And we have all of those listening to. We are still running clubs and activities. Just so school committees aware, a lot, obviously, it's, it's virtual. But what we've worked out is, again, depending upon how many times folks meet virtually and the activities that they're doing, the stipends that are, that are associated with these clubs and activities are, are negotiated through AEA as well, how we, how we pay for them in terms of the amount of time being spent.
Right. And I can segue this right over to Chris and saying that I know he's put out a Google Doc to all the advisors, asking them how often they're meeting, how many students, and gathering all that information.
Thank you. So there is a, just for the benefit of the public, we've got a packet, in our packet is a list of all the different clubs and activities as well as the balance in each of the accounts. So I don't think we need to go through them one by one. But certainly if any committee members have any questions about any of the, either the balances or want to know more about a specific club or activity, now's the time.
I have a question about the, I was reading the class of 2020. And do they, Barbara or Chris, do they have to spend their balance by a certain time or by the end of the year or something?
They don't have to spend it, but there is a time limit. I'm not sure if it's six months or a year where we physically cut a check to their treasurer and they take all of the funds at that, at that point.
And, and what has happened a lot, Kathy, with, with the classes is they've actually started divvying money up into other classes as well to, to help support them. So they've done that in the past.
And, and just as we're talking about the finances for some of these things that, you know, one of the things we haven't really talked about, and I'm assuming Chris and Barbara, you've probably had Chris and Barbara, you've probably had some thoughts if things do come up relative to fundraising. And if people do need to fundraise, what, you know, what are we approving? And I'm assuming, and Jim, you can chime in here, that any changes needed. Can be handed handled procedurally with you and Chris and doesn't require us to. Temporarily update policy or anything like that, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't seen, I mean, I don't see those typically, they would go to Barbara and Chris in terms of the the number of fundraising events, I haven't. I don't normally get the what they're doing right now, I don't know if we've had many that we've had to approve yet. But being out of school, it's gonna be, there'll be fewer and fewer events for sure.
We've had a couple, like, we just had a walkathon today.
Yeah, and I assume, Chris, you're doing things like, okay, if if somebody were going, doing a fundraiser they normally do. Obviously, they're not going to be going house to house to do if there's anything they were doing, we would, you know, kind of overlay current. Safety procedures over top of it to. To either say, hey, you have to modify this or whatever the case is, right?
Yeah, I mean, just even the walkathon, for example, it's a virtual walkathon and then, you know, we're we're using the city hall systems, so we don't have to, you know, deal with cash. And cash collections. And there's the, so, yes, we are.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments about anything here? Do we need to take a vote? Or is this just for our information?
No, you you have to approve the activities, accounts, yeah. There is a, there is a motion in there.
Okay.
For two, there are actually two, there are two motions, because.
The reconciliation, yeah.
I think I've got them, Laurie.
Yeah.
I move to approve the FY twenty one student activities, clubs and accounts as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Kathy Bates?
Hi.
Aaron Williams?
Hi.
Paul Kendall?
Hi.
Mark Terry?
Hi.
An eye for me, that passes, thank you.
There's also a second motion that says. Move to authorize the building principals and the designated to receive and disperse student activity funds in accordance with school committee policy.
Second.
All in favor, Paul Kendall?
Hi.
Kathy Bates?
Hi.
Karen Williams?
Hi.
Mark Terry?
Hi.
An eye for me as well, thank you, that passes. Okay, excellent. So we are now on to the. MAS.
What about the?
The reconciliation.
You have to reconcile, yeah.
For October twenty nineteen to June twenty twenty. So what do we need to know about that?
It would be typically just if anybody has any questions.
Any questions, I have the motion, but I don't know if people want more information about it or.
Is is there anything Barbara or Chris or Jim you wanna?
Anything more we need to know about that?
I'll just jump in and say that all of these. Activity counts are reconciled quarterly. It's usually a secretary or advisor at each of the buildings reconciles, someone in the business office reconciles. And the principal reconciles, and then it comes to school committee, so three other people have seen these before they come to you.
Just one question on that. This is for a period of last October to June, so nine month window, did we miss a couple of cycles because of covid or?
No, we actually in in April did approve the October, November and December ones. Yeah.
So are we really just looking for January to June then?
Yes, I believe so, because I'm looking at one of my C Laurie's. Signature on the April in April, so, yeah.
And then I signed a bunch, I signed a bunch of new ones.
Correct, that is, that is right, Mark, though, it's just January through.
So I'll move to approve the student activities account bank reconciliations with a period of January one through June thirty twenty twenty as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Paul Kendall?
Hi.
Mark Terry?
Hi.
Kathy Bates?
Hi.
Karen Williams?
Hi.
An eye for me as well. And then next off, we are going to the. MASC twenty twenty resolutions, and I'm not sure, I I did read through them myself today, but I don't know if we're ready to talk about them yet or as to how we would vote or. Do we want to appoint somebody and then have that conversation, who read, who has had a. To decide. These resolutions.
I've read them.
I've read them, the only one I'm not sure about is resolution four, but I don't know how, what about everybody else, have they read them? Ready just?
Yeah, I don't know number wise, the one that I wasn't sure about was the one about.
That's the one.
At a younger age, is that the one, yeah. What about Paul or Mark, are there enough of us that read it so that we can go through them and just finish the conversation?
And if you're not comfortable, we do have one more meeting before the virtual meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if folks are ready, we can just get it done now, I I think that was really the only one that gave me an issue, so unless people have issues with others. We don't have to go through every single one and have a big discussion about it if we're on the same page.
Yeah.
There are a couple of little things that that. I would mention, nothing, nothing in great detail.
Okay.
On other.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say for anyone who didn't get a chance to go through this, would you prefer some extra time so we could talk about it more in depth at another meeting?
I'm okay with this.
It doesn't really matter to me, I've read them, you know, as is typical, some of them are kind of pointless. Were weren't proofread. It's like it's. Of the third one, it doesn't even make, or second to last paragraph of the third one, it doesn't even dramatic, didn't even make sense. So. But again, that's.
But in 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 their theory or, you know, their the spirit of it, you can. You can see that.
Yes, school committee members should ensure that our, that school culture. And that every, it doesn't even read. So. And that's their resolution, that's what they're, that's, you know, so, that isn't even the the whereas part, so. I mean, that didn't have any substance to it, it was just taking a stand on. On anti racism stuff, which is fine.
Yeah.
It's clearly not well written.
And Mark, what about your things?
So I just said both years, I think from having gone into the. The actual delegate assembly when they've had it passed a couple of times, there are often clarifications, so by the time they they vote on these things, they fix them. And it'll be proper, so I think we, you know, if we're gonna participate, we ought to be prepared to. Comment on the substance of them.
Yeah.
The, I guess, Laurie, what I'd say is I, my comments are kind of. Small with respect to a couple of different ones, so I guess what I think if we're gonna have the conversation, why don't we just go through them in numerical order? And see.
Try to do it as quickly as we can, because it's gonna be the same conversation the next.
But if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna do it again, then I I'm fine waiting until we're all ready to do it.
Are we all ready to do it? I mean, Aaron, I think you're the only one that didn't answer before, right?
Yeah, I'm excited moving forward.
All right, and then maybe you'll get the gist of what we're talking, you know, what what they're about, and if there's something that you object to that you can let us know, but let's just go through them one at a time. The first one is about MCAS and high stakes testing, and I'll start by saying I agree with that, is there anybody else who feels differently?
I didn't disagree, I just questioned why we're, this is for the class of twenty twenty two. And I wasn't sure why they're taking this up now, when I assume the kids that were supposed to take it last year. Why is, why is this relevant now, what is it asking for for this particular group of kids?
Is it so it doesn't get used as a graduation requirement for them?
Yeah, no, but what, right, but that's like kids not that are gonna graduate this coming June, but the June after.
Yeah.
But it's talking about.
In the same boat, Mark, it it seems like they're saying, don't make it a requirement, even though there's potentially time for them to take it next year. Right, I I, it's like, okay, fine, don't do MCAS this year, but why are you just abolishing it if they have an extra year?
Right.
To take it, I I said, to me, that was overreaching, it's it says. That that they shouldn't need to take it this year, but also just removing it from their requirement for graduation. But why not remove it from their prior graduation if they can't take it next year too because of this?
Jim, I don't know if you you have a better sense of like how this would play out?
So there, so if if this year, the MCAS was not given to students, they're currently juniors. Then next year, if they took it in the spring of their senior year, one, we may not get the results in. In time, two, anyone who has to take a retest would not have that flexibility to do that either. Remember, the testing is done in the spring, therefore, we do not get the results typically until August, September. And we wouldn't have that capacity to provide students with retake opportunities.
So this kind of ties in with our position, with the position of don't waste our time this year with MCAS testing, we've got enough other problems.
Yes.
And if we're saying that, then we're, we basically need to cover the people who would be harmed by it, okay?
And it's and it's that group only, I mean, I don't say only.
I mean, the last paragraph.
Last paragraph includes everybody.
Additionally, additionally, we reiterate our call for moratorium on all high stakes testing.
Yeah, which.
Which I think, you know.
I mean, the difference Cathy is, they're saying, let's not do MCAS for anybody, but what what we were just talking about is for the group that it was used next year. They were also asking for them to be relieved of it being.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yeah, because it's partly also because the material that would be on it could have been things that they missed while we were.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Right, I'm good with that, I'm I'm in support.
Okay, same, so it sounds like we have a quorum there, let's move to two is the covid state funding for all of the.
Yeah.
Things that they're asking us to do, can't say no to that, right?
Right.
Yeah, there's, I don't think there's anything there, just.
Right.
Hey, if we if we doing things because of covid, we need some money.
Right.
Right, the anti racism resolution, I mean, we we made a statement of our own, but certainly. I don't find any issue with supporting this.
Okay.
Anybody?
Nope.
Um, the fourth, lowering the voting age for municipal elections, that was the one, I mean, I didn't really feel qualified to make a decision about that. I don't know, honestly, if a sixteen year old is. You know.
I think that falls into a stay in our lane kind of thing.
That's how I feel about that.
If this was, hey, how do we teach civics engagement in in schools and asking for funds or for curriculum, awesome, but. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'll just say, I I didn't see it quite that way, I kind of looked at it as. It it, it's an exercise in civic engagement by giving people the right to vote. And so I was. Fine where we can, you know, it's asking who's gonna vote for for us or for people in the school committee and others, I was okay with it. You know, not a not a huge deal from my perspective, but that was an interesting idea.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, I think as a school committee, why we why would we take a stand, a position on it, what does it have to do with our? Our role as school committee members?
Yeah, I think they try to tie it into trying to promote civics, civics and civic engagement through curriculum, that that's what they're trying to tie it to. You know, I guess, given a different opinions on whether that works or doesn't, but.
Yeah, I mean, I did spend some time thinking about this today, because then, of course, you start thinking about, you know. Would I have been in a position to, you know, vote at sixteen and really know what I was doing and like my kids and people that I know and, you know, in many cases, I'm sure, actually had a. What came to mind today is I had a really great conversation yesterday with my eleven year old niece who could speak very intelligently on what's going on politically. And she could speak about, she lives in California, she knows the names of all the fires that are going on and where they're contained and where they're not contained and, you know, there, I'm sure that there are plenty of people that. In this age group that are much more capable of, you know, making a good decision than some adults that are voting, but by the same token, I just don't feel qualified to say whether, you know, it should be. All sixteen year olds are ready to do that, and I understand the point they're making, they can drive, they can do other things, but. I don't, I just don't feel. I don't feel like I. It's appropriate for us to maybe weighing in here. I don't know enough about about it.
Yeah, I I just don't see, I just don't see the connection back to schools aside from that age person is in our walls.
Right, I mean, I was feeling like maybe it was messaging to, it was us, you know, showing our our youth that, you know, we have faith that they want to be engaged and can make good decisions. And I do believe that. But I feel like this is like jumping the gun a little bit, if it were. You know, getting more support so that we can develop that that skill and those. Critical thinking skills in that age group through civics or through other things, that's a different story, but but saying right now from a school committee perspective. That that I support that, I'm really don't, not ready to do that.
So Kathy, you're the one that initially had thoughts on this, you're quiet.
No, that, I, I'm along the lines with Laurie. I I mean, the civic part, like, like if we were, if it was funding civics, I I think all of that is of value, but. I I'm not sure yet. If, I I just think it needs more research to, you know, are, is that age group ready? And then, in kind of like what you're saying, Paul, I'm not, I'm not sure it's exactly in our purview, what they're asking us to support here, so. So I guess I, that would be no at this point. Or or just decline, like, don't, let's not, we won't vote on that one.
Does anyone feel strongly that it should be yes?
No, I I probably would would support this individually. I certainly, you know, respect the 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 opinion you guys have all articulated, I just think it's. It's a local election. And I can see, I guess, I think about the struggles we have in this country with people voting. Getting people to start voting earlier, I think it's a good thing, I think. Having people engaged in that process, using the opportunity ideally through schools and social studies program, if there's an opportunity there. But I think we're changing the world with this one, no, you know, and I think if if the the committee feels as a whole that this is. That's something it's prepared to support, I certainly am not gonna, not gonna keep beating on the drum for sure.
Yeah, and and I agree with you, Mark, that the the part that it it was lacking is that opportunity from the curriculum standpoint, right? If it was backed up by that. Otherwise, somebody could just be like, okay, we're gonna enable this, and now they're just puppets for their, for their parents to say, hey, go vote for this person out of the school committee or whatever. You know, unless we're unless we're backing it up with, hey, we're we're educating them in this, and there's. A curriculum with funding that says, this is what we want, we want that engagement, we're prepared to. You know, do more in our space to support it, and this correlates to that, that's where I, you know, without that other piece, it just seems. You know, I just don't see it connected without without it, that's just.
Yeah, I'm curious whether educators on the call have any opinions on this one, the Jim or Mike?
I honestly don't, I mean. If it if it related back just to civic teaching. Certainly, I agree with that com, those comments that that's where we'd be focused on, and and again, civics is actually. You know, one of the new requirements in terms of what we should be teaching, so I think that's. That's where we should.
Start.
School district start, yeah, exactly.
That's like step one.
Yeah.
Note that the people that are saying maybe not so much right now are the people that have raised multiple sixteen year olds.
I've got one in about twelve hours.
Actually, it's, I.
But but not.
It's just talking about municipal elections, actually, I didn't, I kind of missed that part, I thought it was like.
Yeah.
I thought it was like nation, you know, statewide, like they're gonna vote, so I thought definitely that's not our purview, but.
Yeah, I, why don't we, we.
We can move on.
Move on from this one for now, and if, the vote's not gonna be for a while, right, it's in the. Yeah, so we have another meeting if somebody wants to bring it back, but let's try to get through this as quickly as we can.
Yeah.
Supported increase for federal stimulus funding.
Yes.
So the only, the only thing I had on this is not either set up, but it's the way they wrote the, excuse the resolution. Is gets into tax. Is gets into tax policy, right? So I'm fine with them saying urging mass congressional delegations to advocate for and approve education. Additional education funding for national public schools. But then they're they add in the through the enactment of the progressive tax legislation. And, you know, we all want to see funding, but I'm not a tax expert. And I honestly don't think that the MAS C should be taking positions, you know, advocating necessarily for a specific. Approach to taxation, particularly something as ambiguous as progressive. Very vague term. So I I that was the only thing I had, and if we were if we were at the delegate assembly, I might suggest that we look for. Amendment to strike that last clause, um but otherwise, obviously, I'm in favor of the overall premise of it.
A hundred percent agree with what Mark just said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I like what you said, Mark. Yeah.
Particularly the the word progressive cuz that's loaded right now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's all make notes of this because we don't know yet who our delegate is, but but it.
I got a feeling I know who it is.
But we're hoping for one person.
Aaron, you're up.
Retention of Medicaid revenue, I mean. Jim, maybe you could comment on that one. Did you? Oh, did you get a chance to look at that?
I I did. Um currently in Barbara, I she, this would be a loaded question for Chris, but uh because he wouldn't necessarily know this right off the top of his head. Um currently, the Medicaid runs through the town. Um they get the funding. And I forget it's it, I want to say fifty thousand, Barbara?
Um. It's it's between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Um they made some changes a year or two ago that allowed us to pick up some more of the expenses.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'd say between fifty and seventy-five right now.
Right. So so the way this policy or excuse me, the resolution reads is that um. The the amount goes from the municipality through the school districts revolving accounts. Um, we don't we don't see those funds come through, correct, Barbara?
Correct. It's a general fund town revenue.
Right.
We do all the work, but they get the money.
We do all the work, but we also use the the collaborative to to file the.
They filed the paperwork.
The the paperwork for us, right?
So so just to understand, the challenge right now is that the services we provide that can build back to Medicaid when it comes through. It actually doesn't end up uh back in our budget to cover the cost of the services we rendered.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, it that I wasn't totally clear on.
Yeah.
The the problem statement and the resolution on this one, so um I'm I'm supportive if that's what it means.
Now, the the town might argue that it does come back to the school as part of the seventy thirty split.
Right.
It goes into the revenues that have split.
Yeah, but it's a it's a, you know, it's not a, hey, we didn't expect that. We we expended the resources and it's a reimbursement, right? So reimbursements shouldn't fall into a seventy thirty split.
It it makes sense to put in a revolving account to me, so I.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that. I'm just I'm just giving you the background.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
How we get that. Yeah.
Was that a yes on that one?
Yep.
From everybody. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Um attempts by uh USDA E to direct funding to private schools.
Lot of litigation going on out there on this one now.
Anybody else? So we'll support that. Okay. Yep, uh, membership of a school committee member on the board of elementary and secondary education.
I had to laugh when I saw this one because I was doing something for work and was looking at the composition of the board of education. Like, why is there nobody from the MAS C on there? And like, then this shows up, I'm like, perfect, you know, I'm in favor of that.
Same. I mean, why not?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, I I that don't have a strong opinion either way. I don't think it, honestly, I don't think it's gonna matter.
Well, Paul, we were gonna nominate you as one of the three people.
Yeah, yeah, really from a whole state.
And and then it's in it says in five additional members at the very end of that.
I think that's what's in there now. Um they're like the five additional get appointed by the governor.
Oh, okay.
I think that underlining is probably not accurate there.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think.
All right, we're almost to the end, not number nine.
Seven, eight, nine, yeah.
Providing equity for sexual orientation LGBTQ plus students, teachers and staff.
So the only thing on this that they'll point out is. This first half, so the state employment law, which has covered first cover staff, already includes sexual orientation and gender identity as protected classes. So that they're asking for something that's already done, but I went and looked at the um the student discrimination statute and they're not included in there. So, you know, from a technical perspective, um I think they need to modify what they're asking for to limit it to what really is missing. But otherwise, you know, I I fully support this one.
Yep.
So would our delegate? Offer an amendment? Is that what you think?
Yeah, I would just sort of provide equity and support for LGBTQ plus students. And I'm not sure how the last clause there really works in petition or legislative delegation, but yeah.
But it's just redundant to have teachers and staff cuz they're already covered.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and 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 for employment, that it's also related to the Supreme Court ruling, right, Mark? So.
Yeah, I mean, Supreme Court still has some work to do in the federal law, but um. But yeah, I mean, right now, it's it's really in a pretty good place and certainly mass law protects more than federal law, so.
Right.
From a perspective of what we're doing here, um, you know, I think it's I think it does it aim to amend the statute on student discrimination. It makes perfect sense and should be should be addressed.
Yeah, so I I I agree with whatever amendment you're talking about to make it, you know, accurately. Protect the right people that need it at this point.
Excellent. And then finally, the um relative to the monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic. And maybe, Jim, you can weigh in here. They're looking to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance.
From an attendance standpoint, I I mean, it is a challenge for sure um in terms of of. Ensuring that remote students, hybrid students, uh students who are uh tech what we call planned absences, someone who may be quarantined. Um, you know, how do we define them as absent or present during the day, every day? Uh, how many check-ins do you need uh with a child to ensure that they're present throughout the day or is it a half a day? Um, so, you know. I'm indifferent to it. I mean, we're working hard trying to to ensure that we're touching base with students and and making sure they're present. But um I don't know, Mike Kelly, you know, Kelly's on, I don't know how much of a challenge it's been for your staff, Kelly, to. Um, ensure that the attendance is accurate.
So so Jim, what what are you hearing or seeing? Because again, this is MAS C statewide to DSC stuff, right?
Right.
Um, you know, don't get a big head, but we're probably in a better position than I think a lot of places relative to uh.
Sure.
Thing, so it it's one of those times where we have to take off our Ashland hat and think of it as part of MAS C as a whole.
Fair enough.
And what this mean.
Then I would support it.
Wide.
Yep.
Um, and how to how to how does this, what's the ramifications for districts that aren't as. Prepared or operational, is ready to do this sort of thing as we are? And, you know, kind of from that context, is this something that should be supported?
Uh, yes. Thank you for putting it in that light.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Paul.
Yep. Yep.
Does anybody feel differently about that?
I I I mean, notwithstanding this, I feel differently when we're dealing with uh attendance and accountability to begin with. Uh, partly because of of um students who are um. Who who are absent, let's just go back a couple of years. We might have a student who's hospitalized for mental health concerns, but yet. Um, that student is is being provided a tutor and work every day, uh and we're still educating the child. Uh, they're still technically considered absent uh as part of the accountability structure, which makes no sense to me. Um, unexcused absence when we're actually providing work uh in in tutoring. Uh, or a um some districts have tried to work around this when a family um goes uh say back to. Um, you know, goes to India for for a month long. Um, they're unenrolled and then re-enrolled back. Well, technically, no, those students are supposed to be marked absent. Uh, but um, you know, how do we, as a district, actually um i- impacts our accountability negatively if we keep them enrolled and and mark them absent every day? So so but.
So you're saying.
Contextually, I agree with Paul on this, and yes, I would support this, yeah.
Okay, okay. So now, is there anybody who wants to be the delegate? And do we know when this is happening?
It's the seventh.
Is it gonna be on?
One o'clock virtual meeting. Yep.
November seventh, one o'clock. First, I'll ask if anybody wants to.
I'll I'll do it. I I actually kind of enjoy doing this stuff and.
Thank you, Mark.
Kathy already asked. Aaron, Aaron ducks lower below the horizon there.
Just about ready to raise my hand.
I was gonna say, I almost volunteered cuz I am available.
You guys go right ahead. He said it's November seventh.
Which is a Saturday.
Yeah, I should really make sure that I'm not doing something that day. Let me just uh do a quick check.
If it turns out that you need, you know, you need a backup, I'm happy to be the number two.
I I I did, I do think that in previous years, we did say who would back up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Looks fine in my calendar, but Lori, I'm happy to have a backup.
Yeah, sure.
With Lori as a backup.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we need to vote that, yeah.
Well, in years past, we've been at the conference, you know, so.
Right, but we usually vote the delegate before we go and then we send you into the room, Kathy.
And we have to submit this too.
Saturday.
Yeah.
What's that like?
I said, we usually we vote before we leave and then we send you into the room. Whoever has said, yeah, I know you've done it before. Yeah.
All right.
So I I would move to appoint Mark Terry uh with Lori Toski as a backup as our voting delegate for the twenty twenty MAS C. I'm assuming that's MAS S annual business meeting?
Uh, it's it's.
Just the MAS C.
Delegate Assembly is just the MAS C part, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a joint conference, but this is just the meeting itself.
Motion has MAS D.
And C.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As MAS MAS C slash MAS D, and I didn't know what that was, so.
Yes, and they're next to each other.
Whatever you'd like it to be.
For the twenty twenty MAS C annual business meeting on November seventh, twenty twenty.
Um.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I for me as well.
So Lori?
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow, are are you in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, so this form, uh the the delegation form needs to be filled out, uh in fact, back tomorrow, uh says by the sixteenth. Um, of October, so and it has to have your signature.
Okay.
So we'll make sure we get to that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. All right, Kathy, uh, yes, are we up to you, Kathy?
Oh, are we?
Have any?
Yes.
Yeah.
And let me just pull up my my thing. Here it is. Okay. Uh, between September twenty fourth and October fourteenth, I Kathleen Bates authorized by my signature payables in the amount of. Eight hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-five cents. This includes general fund expenses of four hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Evolving expenses of eighty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And grant expenses of two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred five dollars and thirty-eight cents. And meals tax expenses of ten dollars and eleven cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of two million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred nine dollars and eighty-six cents.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we can move to the minutes that we do have. We have the August eighteenth tri board. Does anybody have anything there? Seeing none, who wants to make a motion for that? Oh, Kathy, are you trying to talk in your?
Sorry, yes, sorry, I was reading. Um, yes, no, I do on the tri board meeting.
Yeah.
Minutes. Um, do we need to show on there that school committee opened the meeting too? I think all it says is that Yolanda opened this school, the select board meeting.
Uh, we definitely did open our own meeting.
So do we need that? I don't think that's in there. And.
It should be probably more specific, but it does says that Lori took attendance and received consensus, so.
I don't know. So anyway, that's just.
Probably more explicit. I think you're right, Kathy.
Right.
It's implied there that that Lori took attendance.
Yeah, I know. It seems kind of, so I thought it was kind of awkward that we didn't open and then she's taking it. I don't know.
So.
So maybe just the line.
And maybe just modify that one to say that this is.
Open the meeting and took attendance or something?
It's cleaner. We should say we had it posted. It was a a meeting that we opened and that we closed, so.
All right.
Yes, thank you for noticing that. Yeah.
Okay, and then in regards to the closing. It says Mark Terry motioned to close the meeting, but he's not listed in either of the roll calls, so.
Was that the first? I was, I missed the first of the two tri boards. Um, I was at the second one.
Yes, and so this is the first one, so.
Okay, so then, so Mark, so Mark Terry could not have motioned, therefore it was.
I think it was Paul Kendall who motioned.
I think we just need to change that. It wasn't Mark Terry that motioned to close the meeting, so.
Good call.
Just add in anybody. Paul Kendall, sure.
Can anybody tell that I didn't look at?
I don't know. And that's it.
Anything else on that August eighteenth? So I will take a motion to approve them as amended.
So moved.
Again.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy? Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
I guess I I abstain.
Oh, right. And uh I for me as well. Thank you.
You can still approve minutes if you weren't at the meeting.
I just want to be developed.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong. Yeah.
Okay, next up, um, September fourth. Those did come around in an email. I think it was today or yesterday.
I didn't have anything for.
No, I didn't.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion for those.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Hi.
An I for me as well, that.
Just clarify that motion was to approve as presented.
Yes, thank you, Paul. Trying to move it along a little too quickly here. Uh, minutes of September eleventh. Anybody have anything there?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of September eleventh as presented?
As presented, so moved.
Who's got the second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor, Mark Terry?
Hi.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Hi.
Aaron Williams?
Aye.
And I for me as well. Thank you. And then September eighteenth, did anybody have anything for those minutes?
No.
No.
So, all right, I'll take a motion to approve the September eighteenth minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
An I for me as well. Thank you.
So um I can send this over to Aaron, but uh for for updating those tri board minutes. I just looked back at how I modified the um the August thirty-first tri board minutes that we already have approved. And I just took that where it's where it talked about uh. Uh, Yolanda calling it to order. I said the the board slash committee chairs called their respective meetings to order at this time and took a roll call attendance. To replace that top line with that and then.
Okay.
The subsequent ones, so we can just make that modification. I can send that over to her.
That sounds good.
Well, good.
And did you fix the uh the Mark Terry thing? Feel I heard it.
Mention that in the email to it, but I'll send it to her.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any gifts and donations tonight?
We do not.
We do not?
No.
Okay, uh, do we have an assistant superintendent update?
Very brief. Um, first of all, I do want to take the opportunity to thank Barbara publicly as well. She's always been great to me and I I will miss her uh more than she knows. So I look forward to uh spending a little bit of time with you tomorrow, Barbara. Um, in terms of an assistant superintendent's update, uh we are getting ready for November third professional development day. Um, so we're busy planning that. Uh, one of the the key things that all of the principals have said is that. Their staff needs time and they need some time with their staff, so we are going to be ensuring that that is provided. So we are going to be ensuring that that is provided to our staff members to plan and to work together and to collaborate. And to just continue to get themselves ready to present the work both in a live format as well as. Synchronously synchronous instruction, asynchronous instructions. We want to continue to provide folks the much needed time there. Our high school team continues to work with our consultants, Chris Taylor and Des Floyd, around achieving an anti-racist vision. So they will be working with our our high school team again for another. Great session that will be led by our equity team after working through the process with Chris and Des. Claire Landgren will present again to our Keter Five educators regarding the move to Lucy Hawkins for our literacy instruction. And they have been doing just a tremendous amount of work in that area, and we're really proud of the way that our Keter Five teachers. Have implemented this work so far from from talking to Pete and Claudia. The Reader's Workshop model is alive and well, and folks are are really doing a wonderful job incorporating that that change into their practice. We're also working alongside with Jen Cutler to. Get some work for. In regards to our LGBTQ community and making sure that our students are properly supported and everyone is ready to. Give everything we can for for those those students. So that's some of the stuff that we're looking at for November third. Otherwise, all is going well. Folks are working really hard and and we're really proud of what what all of our teachers are doing.
Hey, Mike, a quick question now that we have a few weeks under our belt and you you mentioned some of the things relative to professional development and time with their the staff and planning. How are the how are the the Wednesdays working out from a preparation standpoint? What's the feedback you're getting there is? Is that giving them the the time they need to 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 execute on the hybrid model efficiently? But how's that time working out when?
I'll I'll be honest, Paul, I haven't had a lot of people reach out to me to tell me that it's not working out, that they need more time, but. I I can send out a little email to ask folks about how the time is has gone. You know. I. I don't know, I don't have.
Care complaints if there wasn't enough time, so.
Yeah, I think I think we would, but I also, I haven't asked specifically that question, so I think it's an important thing for us to do. I know that Jim and I. Are looking to create a survey to talk to our community and our parents about how things are working and and perhaps we should do one for our staff as well and we can gather some of that information.
So I'll follow up on that. Actually. The AA Board and I met yesterday and and. As Mike just alluded to, we're we're working through a survey for families and students, but also the recommendation from the AA was. Let's also make sure we're we're surveying our staff too to see if if. The the parallels are are such that. How the families and students are interpreting what's happening on those Wednesdays and asynchronous days versus what. Staff is putting in for time and needs for time, and if they think, oh, we're giving more than than what is really happening. So we've got to be able to cross-reference that data, so that will be going out to staff as well next week. So so we should have some information for for the next meeting.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? What about member updates? Do we have any building committee news or anybody else that wants to share anything?
So we're chugging along. We have. Working with the MSBA, we got some, we provided our responses to schematic design comments that they provided. We have informally got our. Project budget spreadsheet hammered hammered out. I think there was a question about a two thousand and three project and some cost reclamation. There that I think we have sorted out now. We're going to have the MSBA board is going to take up our project on their twenty-eighth meeting, you know, the twenty-eighth. So, yeah, one thing I'll say, and I extended to the community, extend it to all of you. We've kind of, the building committee is going to shift and is shifting into a different mode of. Information curation, right? We have to essentially boil the ocean to the salient points that are going to be meaningful to people who need to have that information and make decisions. In the in the coming months, right? So I posted something on Facebook. To just inquire to be able to send. Any any topics or questions that they have that they think should be contained in an FAQ. Or anything else, you know, the materials we're putting together. So that the community is just well informed that they have all the answers they need as they go forward and. And, you know, to make sure that everybody's aware while we're expecting the MSBA to approve us on the twenty-eighth. It still needs to go before the town at both town meeting and a ballot question, so this is. Not already decided. We've heard a couple of feedback that people thought it was already a done deal. And that's obviously not the case. I'll also be putting something out sometime soon, just providing people the opportunity. We would be typically having smaller group. In-person things as something like this would go on. We're obviously not going to be able to do that this time, but I'll put out something where people can request. Zoom meetings with myself, Jim and Mike, and potentially any any of the people on the design team to answer questions and give people. The information I need, so for anybody that that is looking for that, you don't need to wait for me to publish something. You can certainly reach out and we're happy to. To have those conversations and certainly if there's any topics or questions that you think should be included in in any of our. You know, packets or different things we're going to be putting out. You know, feel free to reach out to me and we're going to make sure we include them.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else have anything they want to share? I'll just share briefly. You might have noticed there was a young college student, young woman on our, I think it was our last Friday meeting. And she asked if she could interview me, so we had a Zoom interview today and one thing. That I'll share with you is that she picked Ashland because she heard about how well we were doing. So whatever that means, but there's a there's a nice reputation out there somewhere and she heard about it and she picked our community to. Explore, but I couldn't answer all her questions. There were some about curriculum and some about athletics, so Stephen and Mike, I hope you guys don't mind. That I volunteered that you, I said, you know, I don't know the answer, but I know a couple of guys who do and I'm sure they wouldn't mind answering your questions. She's, as it turns out, I said, are you? Because she was asking a lot of COVID-related questions. I said, oh, are you a health major or are you an education major? She said, I'm a journalism major. So so she's obviously wanting to to write about, I guess, how how we're handling it. So you may hear from her with questions if that's okay. And that's all I got.
Lori, just before we we close, if nobody else has anything, just a couple of thank yous. I want to thank. You know, Stephen again for, you know, being proactive in how he's handling things, you know, Jim was able to share that he, you know, and he's and then he sent out the. Then canceling practices this week and and, you know, it it's just nice that. You know, he's he's being very proactive and in lockstep with the things we're doing with the rest of the schools and. And also, the reason people probably don't understand why we all of a sudden had a bunch of minutes all at once. Is that because, you know, Erin Paley typically is the one that writes them up for us, right? And she's been, you know, underwater, so the amount of work involved and. And the busting logistical nightmares she's been dealing with is tremendous, so. So thank, thank you to Erin as well. That's I. I I I see her coming and going when I when I come in to see Jim and 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 she's. So I still got a smile, even though she's she's been underwater with a lot of a lot of challenges on us, so. Thank you, Erin, for all that, and I'm sure people don't don't really appreciate the amount of work. They only see, hey, my bus is late, it's this, you know, but but it's. It's a lot of challenges, especially with the construction on one twenty-eight and or one twenty-six not helping, so.
Thanks, Paul. I second all of that. Thank you, guys.
Me too.
Anybody else? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Paul Kendall?
Hi.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Erin Williams?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Hi.
And I for me as well. Good night, everybody. We'll see you Friday.
See you Friday morning.
Everybody, Barbara?
Thank you, Barbara.
Come back and visit us.
Sure you don't want to be on our COVID call on Friday, too?
You know where to find us every week. We'd love to see you.
Bye. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.